Welcome to the Monday, June 17th Regular School Board Meeting of District 882. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
We have our tentative agenda that is posted for everyone to see, and at this point in time, we would like to make our tentative agenda the agenda for the night, and I will entertain a motion.
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root to approve our tentative agenda as the agenda for this evening. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no, and motion passes six-zero. We have no citizens' comment for this evening. Moving on to item number five, we have our consent agenda. This consists of our minutes from June the 3rd, our personnel matters, and our bill summaries. Each of the board members receives these in their packet ahead of time, has the opportunity to ask questions, which has happened this week, and we have the final version in front of us that we move as a group consent agenda, and I will entertain any conversation or a motion to approve.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no, and motion passes five-zero.
Or you could just do it again.
Or we could just do it again, and I want to back up. Our tentative agenda was approved five-zero. I thought Mark was missing. You looked down there.
Kathy.
Sorry, Mark. So let's redo our consent agenda. Do you have any comments or anything about the consent agenda?
No, I do not.
Okay, so moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no, and this time it passes six and oh. Moving on to our collaborative connections, this is an especially poignant evening to discuss yet another generous donation to our district that Superintendent Olson is going to talk about.
Yeah, so the American Legion Post 260 brought $500 forward to our Monticello Middle School and specifically the eighth grade end-of-the-year barbecue and the celebration event that they have, so we appreciate that coming forward so that the students and staff and admin can have such a wonderful time to celebrate their school year.
And we have a resolution for this gift.
If it be resolved by the Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donation: $500 from the American Legion Post 260 for the eighth-grade end-of-year graduation barbecue.
Second.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. The resolution read by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of approving the donation is read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Resolution for the acceptance of gifts passes six and oh. Moving on to our donor and volunteer thank you. I want to thank you to everybody in the room because I think I saw everybody over in the hospitality hour that we had prior to our meeting tonight. Very well attended by both members of the community and by staff from the district, and we're hoping this will be the first of an annual tradition to thank everyone who gives us both in-kind donations and all of our financial donations that support our kids so generously. As I've said before, if you donate to one of our programs, there is no money skimmed off the top for administrative fees or anything like that. If you choose to donate to one of our programs here in the building, all of that money goes to the program, 100% of it. So to all of our donors and all of our in-kind donors, we have almost $200,000 in financial and in-kind donations this year, and that's just from July of last year. That's just incredible. It really humbles me in this time of a difficult economy that businesses and individuals are willing to give so generously, and so thank you. And then I'd like to have Superintendent Olson say a few words as well.
Well, before we click on to the donor thermometer, I just want to say, oh my goodness, we are Monticello, Minnesota, but we look like we're some big-time city right now. That event just happened, 15 minutes ago, and we have a lot of feed coming in to showcase everybody in almost real time as they celebrated with people from our community, so awesome. Thank you, Gavin. That is a surprise. You're right. He said he had a little surprise for us during the presentation. That looks awesome. Thank you so much, Gavin. Looks awesome. If you can pull up the volunteer.
We like the chyron at the bottom with the "New school starts times." We're just like CNN.
For next year, as you heard from Ryan Sedell, is that we're really going to make a concerted effort to really unify what we're doing in our district. Like, it's great to talk about and celebrate the giving that happens in our community, but it's even better if we have a unified effort. And so I started working with Community Ed about a year ago, and they have two organizational efforts that they're working on right now, and one is that Education Foundation, so it'll be very similar to Scholarship Foundation, and what it'll hopefully do is it'll hopefully be able to collect and capture the community spirit in an organized fashion that also allows us to make some investments using the community giving, just like the scholarship does, so that you can have a growing capacity of monetary funds to be accessible for educational programs that can't be funded because of budgetary restraints. So they're working on that. They're also working on a very systematic volunteer organized structure. Right now, the efforts of teachers and principals, if they want volunteers in a building, is really on their backs, and I'm noticing other school districts have a very unified system of volunteer support, and you know, so one phone call. I feel like we have enough employees in Community Ed that they can take this on under their umbrella, and so they are working on having a volunteer program under them, and so no jobs being added, but a system of support being added for our teachers who need consistent or request either consistent or periodical volunteer in their buildings. So they're working on both capacities, the Educational Foundation and a system of support for human capital. We're going to have ongoing look at both human capital, amount of time given to the organization from volunteers, and then also district donation and the foundation. So district donation will cover things like Ryan said, the supports and traditional things that people have been investing in, but the foundation itself will be able to be so our STEM teachers can keep teaching, and they will have a system where the foundation will have, you know, funds that can be given to them, communication built within. So we're just getting this built right now and hope to be live and ready in August, so today's, we thought, would be a good time to just kick off how we're going to capture human capital and donations to our district in a more unified approach. So it goes on the heels of a great night, and we're going to take that to a step further next year.
Can we also click on the Scholarship Foundation website and show that on the screen for people that would like to see it?
So when working with the Scholarship Foundation, that really is, it's kind of a two-prong. You have the Scholarship Foundation themselves, who is a Board of Directors led by former Superintendent Jim Johnson, and then it's the other approach is absolutely the high school staff who has to do so many things in real time to navigate scholarship season, and this website is just drawing your attention to a build that happened earlier this year and that the high school and myself and Devaney continue to work with, our Scholarship Foundation, to make this a better opportunity and more opportunities for kids. I want to publicly thank Tina Burkholder for years of having this under. Her job responsibility was nothing ever named, but it was something that she just always supported and for years requested that this would come off the district responsibility and onto an organization that could truly look at the funds differently, the investments differently, and the committee, the Board of Directors finally were able to make that move just recently, and so for the first-ever time, scholarships were being given by community giving, and so it's an organization that allows us to, you know, earn more on investment of return, so, which should hopefully sustain the wonderful process and wonderful scholarships that our community donates to graduating seniors. So just lots of things to make connections for us here tonight and then to grow on as well.
What was the total this year? It was like $200,000.
For the scholarship? Oh goodness gracious, I got numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, it was a large $178,000 distributed to members of our graduating class just within our district, and that is just amazing. When you think about that opportunity for our students to have that right here and not have to go out and compete nationally or anything, that we can support them here at home. It's always been an incredible program, and it grows a little bit every year, so.
I mean, how many people were invited tonight between? Because we invited Scholarship Foundation, we invited, obviously, all the donors and all the volunteers, and so it was a night that we reached out to how many people? Yeah. So when you really think of that as a human capital of investment into our community, that's pretty cool, so.
So moving on to item number C, we're going to hear an update from Superintendent Olson and Gavin Nelson on what they've been working on for our new revised Student Board Representative Program and recruitment for that.
Gavin, if you want to come up, and I'll let Gavin talk about the video that he's working on, and then I'll talk about the process that I'm working on with our high school principals.
Well, thank you, Board Chair Zbarth, Superintendent Olson, and the rest of the board. The last couple months, we've been working on a student representative recruitment video to really try to help build what our program, the greatness that it already has achieved over the years, to really try to help get our students more involved in the decision-making process with the board, the policies, and just in general, the administration, just to really get them the grasp of what, you know, it's like to be part of the board or an administration. So we're currently in the process of still getting some last and final interviews. At the end of the year, it kind of got pretty crazy, so we're kind of putting those final touches on, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks that we'll have that final video and ready to rock and roll to showcase at the July 15th board meeting.
And then working with the principals, they have groups of students that they believe they will use that video to target so that it gives them a little bit more information and it gives the voice of other students, but you know, I think we need to, for this year, continue on as we have where we just give our principals time, and they know, you know, some of the changes that you guys are hoping, and then they are going to take that to students that, you know, compete and learn in Allstate over the summer, and then if that doesn't work, and they've already had several conversations, I don't know if you guys want to give an update of how many conversations that you guys have had, but then if that doesn't work, they'll continue on down their list of resources and people who, we do see it as two tracks, so you guys were kind of having that discussion, and they see it as a potential person who wants to come and give the board an update, and then a potential person who wants to really dive deep into governance, and they both thought it might be hard to find one in the same, but there's a potential of finding that second person if we really take our time and use that recruitment video to reach out personally to people. I don't know, Matt and Lori, if you wanted to say anything else?
It's a busy, right? So it takes a little special niche of a student that wants to spend significant, invest significant time in the board process and worry about it in addition to being able to provide an update. Some of the skills we look for in students that want to provide the update to, you know, take feedback for our students and teachers, trying to find the right students. So thinking that here this summer and in the fall to try and make sure we extend some tentacles into the right places and then the rest.
I think like Jeff had mentioned, you know, he had done some training as a student himself, and really that could be our best training that we already have in existence is the students who go to Allstate, and we have that captive audience, so we're hoping that that group of kids, I think there's how many girls and boys from each? One of each, yeah. So we're hoping that one of those two students or both of those would get involved, but if not, we'll have to start looking at some other areas like, you know, DECA, Civics 9 to try and find somebody early, but really trying to identify those high flyers that have that governance-minded approach to the community, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin.
And moving on to item D, we have before us a request to change the start time for the October 21st Regular School Board meeting from 6:00 to 6:30 PM, and that's because on October the 21st, the City of Monticello is hosting a candidate forum for mayor candidates, city council, and school board candidates, and it conflicts with the start of our school board meeting. So we have before us an option to change the start time from 6:00 to 6:30 so that any members of the current board and candidates that are running for school board can participate in that candidate forum. That is the only one that the City of Monticello is going to run. Actually, it's the Chamber of Commerce, not the City of Monticello. It will be at the City Community Center, so did you want to say anything else about that?
No, you're right on the mic.
So that isn't, do we have to do that as an action item, or is it just a, it doesn't say?
That would be an action.
An action item. So is there any discussion from the rest of the board about changing the start time for that meeting?
It'll be exciting to see all three up there.
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of moving the start time on October 21st from 6:00 to 6:30 PM, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no, and the motion passes six-zero. Now we're moving on to teaching and learning, and we are happy to have with us this evening Principal Kristen Green from Eastview Education Center, who has a wonderful presentation for us on their goals and updates for this year. Welcome, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Zbarth, members of the school board, Superintendent Olson, and colleagues and community members. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here with you this evening to share what a positive and productive year we had at Eastview Education Center. I stand up here this evening so, so proud of the work that happened at Eastview this year, the work that was accomplished, and I've prepared a pretty detailed presentation, but I promise I won't read it word-for-word because it gets a little lengthy. I found that my pride came beaming through as I was preparing this for you this evening. All right. So back in the fall, I set a pretty rigorous three-year goal for growth for our kindergarten students and teachers with regard to foundational literacy skills. Prior to my arrival, Eastview had started the work of implementing two new curricular resources, Functional Phonics and Amplify. In this year, we had the opportunity to refine our instructional practices and use these resources in what we thought would be the most impactful ways for students in order to meet all of their needs. I'm really proud of the work that was done this year. Also this fall, I included a goal for our preschool students to be working towards as well, and I'll speak more to some future goals we have for that coming up. So our progress update. In preschool, we're working very, very hard to provide students with an experience that incorporates social, emotional, and academic opportunities through play, age-appropriate activities, and structured routines. Students are attending to tasks, transitioning between tasks, taking turns, and regulating big feelings. They're also learning to write their letters and begin to recognize sounds. In kindergarten, we continue to build this foundation. Students engaged in instructional model known as flexible grouping for phonics instruction. This work allowed students to be in classrooms and work along students who were learning at their same level and pace. It allowed teachers to truly tailor their instruction and the needs of each student. It was a new structure for our students and staff, and it went much better than we had ever expected. Phonics instruction was clear and explicit and highly structured. Students navigated it beautifully. As you can see, we achieved both of our goals that we had set. So in preschool, we used a measurement tool referred to as Teaching Strategies Gold. It is a fairly broad assessment tool that looks at social, emotional needs as well as students being prepared for school. The goal was 80% of them would, based on teacher assessment and feedback, demonstrate readiness for school. We were right at 79.7% of our preschool students meeting that goal. In kindergarten, when I started with you this fall, when kindergartners left last year, we were only at about 47% of students achieving at that benchmark or grade-level expectation. I decided to set a three-year goal to get us towards, hopefully, in the next three years, our students will be performing about 70% of them at benchmark. So the lofty goal this year was to increase by about 7%. Our students and staff worked so, so hard together, and the spring benchmark assessment revealed that 54.4% of students performed at benchmark or grade-level expectation. So that meets our 7% goal for this first year of increasing proficiency. This was by implementing that flexible group model across all teams, really purposeful expectations, and what I'm most proud of when it comes to the Eastview staff is their really intentional and focused work in PLCs. They were vulnerable, they owned areas that they wanted to grow in, and they were willing to share ideas and collaborate and really develop clear partnerships together so that all students' needs would be addressed and met. We refined along the way, kids were moving in and out of groups wherever their best fit was, and as you can see, it really showed in student progress. Eleven out of our 12 kindergarten teachers engaged in letters training. That learning is directly tied to the model that we implemented with flexible grouping, and teachers were able to really articulate, I can totally see the connection here. Everything I'm learning in this coursework, I'm applying it directly in the classroom. So that continued to advance the growth, and we were very, very fortunate to have a reading coach coming into classrooms. This year, it was the amazing Lindsay Rettman, who we're sorry to see go, but she came in and she would do observations during Functional Phonics. She would take notes, and then she would have a really open and safe conversation with teachers where it wasn't a evaluative, it wasn't a gotcha, it was a, have you thought of this, or I noticed this? And then she'd come back and she'd watch teachers, and they'd try different things, and they'd say, wow, I took that idea and look what happened. This feels great. What else can I continue to do differently? So that was really embraced by our team, and you could see the growth happening as they took that in. So what you see students doing in our school is, as I mentioned, attending to tasks, transitioning between activities and preschool, and then in kindergarten, they really maturely and positively engaged in that flexible grouping. So you've got five- and six-year-olds who have a homeroom teacher, and then during phonics time, they head down the hall, and they might go work with a different teacher down the hall. And here they are, five and six years old, they've got their materials, they're marching to a different classroom, they're having phonics instruction, and then they're engaging back in their classroom. So they really appropriately handled that model, and as I said, it went much better than we had expected. We were very tight on the expectations for minutes of this instruction. In our letters training, that's very clear, that there is a certain amount of time that you should be spending on each skill, and teachers were really faithful at implementing that. All right. This is what you see staff doing. You see staff collaborating, engaging in intentional team meetings, engaging in PLCs, engaging in letters work, weekly and dedicated participation in PLCs, being open to conversation and professional growth, and we will continue that letters training as we move into next year. So 11 of 12 kindergarten teachers started year one. It's a two-year process of letters training. 11 of them will wrap up, finish year two next year, and that final teacher is beginning year one. So starting this fall, everyone will be engaged in the letters training and bringing that learning into classrooms. So next steps. I happen to be very excited about a shift in part of my responsibilities at Eastview, and that will be to have a more direct role in instructional leadership with our preschool program. And so what I really want to help develop is preschool and kindergarten being a very united entity in our building so that if families send their students to us in preschool, they know they're prepared for kindergarten when they go to Eastview. Just like my colleagues at Little Mountain and Pinewood should know, they went to Eastview, they're going to show up to Little Mountain and Pinewood prepared for what comes next. And so I'm really just hoping to sort of bridge that between two programs, and I'm very excited to lead their PLCs next year. We also are, we've discovered that the Teaching Strategies Gold is a great assessment. We report it to the state, but it's a bit subjective. So next year, our four-year-olds, who will launch from preschool into our Eastview Kindergarten Program, will do the FastBridge assessment for early learners on them. That's going to be comparing apples to apples. So we assess with FastBridge in kindergarten, we'll get that dipstick. We'll assess our preschoolers in some of those really primary foundational early literacy skills, and then we'll be able to share that with our kindergarten teachers. So that's a shift that we will be making, and we'll just continue growing and learning together. Real quickly, we also set a vision of a learner goal, and we were focusing on resiliency. We identified this. We really wanted to be a proactive approach, teaching children how to, if you encounter a struggle, how are you resilient? How do you keep going? We wanted common language. That was happening. The quote at the bottom, I myself overheard a student say this as I was in a classroom moving through one day. They were in some groups, and a little six-year-old girl, she said to her friend, who was getting a little bit frustrated because he made a mistake, she said to him, wow, if you're going to be a resilient learner, you just got to keep trying even if you didn't get it right at first. Word for word, that's what she said. I think she got it. She understood what we meant by continuing to try. Our staff also modeled resiliency. We were really big on that. Model, it's okay to make a mistake. How do you keep going? How do you get there? How do you say, I can't do it yet, but I'll keep trying? And there you go. Eastview in a nutshell. I'm very proud of the work that our staff and students engaged in this year, and we look forward to continuing to build that partnership. We are working closely with the Rally to Read in building that community involvement and family engagement in building early literacy in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Green, I just want to say thank you for the detail that you gave us on the academic end of things. I know that has been a huge priority for the board as we've talked with Superintendent Olson about district goals, and we've said over and over and over, academics, 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 kids have to read better, the kids have to do math better, and you're showing us how you're doing it, and detailed, and I really appreciate that you took the time to put that together. I also remember a long, long time ago when you said this was tailor-made job for you, and you were so excited to come, and it really shows through, and I want to thank you for that.
I was reflecting, it was about a year ago that I got to introduce myself to this community, and it has been an incredibly warm welcome, and it is the best gig on the planet. It is my dream job, and so working with that staff and seeing how hard they're willing to work for kids, that's what I, I've told Eric multiple times, this district really does that well. They prioritize students and building programming for them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any, any questions for Ms. Green before she runs away from the podium?
I just think that whole dialogue right there is exactly between Chair Zibarth and Principal Green is exactly what we hope as a district is to, you know, hold ourselves accountable to help children how to successfully navigate academics and reach the best version of themselves, but do it in a way that doesn't put pressure on a child, right? It's like being in our optimal, our optimal zone of performance is so important, and, and while you guys always want pressure on me, like, I won't bring it to them and put, you know, that pressure. It's, it's really about us, you know, finding that balance of, of delivering a well-balanced education to kids, and, and that, that was a prime example of the, the observables that everybody's working on, but then also, you know, having those, those, those supports through the vision of the learner, which is really a lot of key soft skills that, that employers are wa, are wanting for our kids. And we're starting them in five, and a five-year-old can, you know, say things about resilience at that age, and, and so it's, it's a good reminder that social, emotional piece of education, it's not fake, it's actually what employers want and, and need our, our people to have, and, and we're developing that.
I really like, I haven't learned that yet. I'm going to borrow that if you don't mind.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our high school principals, we have Principal Lori Hansen and Principal Matt Colwell with us today that have some really exciting new courses that they're proposing in our agricultural, we have a new agricultural department. And so thank you for coming this evening, and we're excited to have you here and tell us more about these programs as soon as we get the slides. There we go.
Thank you for having us here. Kristin certainly is a hard act to follow, and we're going to bookend the five-year-olds with the fifteen to eighteen-year-olds, so maybe it's an okay transition. We're coming tonight with four new course offerings that fall under that AIG, AIG Education Model. So we had FTE that we had approved, I believe, at the last board meeting. We've hired Jacob Wiltz, who is a very excited and dynamic young professional who wants to roll up his hands and build an AIG program with us. And we got to the AIG kind of world because we have two years of data that said agricultural education is in the top five in our high school students' interest under that career cluster model with MCIS. So we know that it's an area that we want to start to tap into. So we are, at this point, ready, feels like we're a little late to the game for talking for twenty-four, twenty-five, but we've, we're able to collect some data from our students right at the end of the school year because we moved this very quickly. That helped us identify four courses that we want to bring for approval tonight, but then also look at, that will be implemented over the course of the year and into next year. We're going to just kind of put them in our tool bag for right now so that we can finish building our schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five with the switch from the semesters to the trimesters, and we'll see where they best fit and how we best implement them. But we do have student data also that says, excuse me, that says these are high-interest areas, so we are coming to you knowing that these can be filled with current, current ninth through eleventh graders. So I'm just going to run through all four of them and then approve at the end, is that okay?
Is that okay with everybody, or do you want to approve them individually?
The four courses, as I shared, all were surveyed by students in the last week of school. All three, three out of the four will align MDE Career and Tech Ed frameworks, so we will go through that as we develop. These will also go through that process so that we can work with MDE guidance and look for reimbursement as well with that. And then the fourth course aligns to our unified programming, so we feel like we've got a nice introductory options and know that these are high-interest areas that our kids are looking for. The, the first one is Intro to AIG, and it's, as I shared, introductory-level courses. Currently, we're seeking opportunities within our county and our regional partners to help support these, and we're looking at the implementation of FFA as well. And then we have time built in for Jacob and our career and college coordinators to really make sure we build them well and we align to MDE, as I had shared. So the first one is Intro to AIG. I can read it to you, it is nine through twelve elective, it follows, falls under the agriculture, food, and natural resources pathway. Let's see. We would be looking at, this would probably be our very first course that we would offer in the fall. It just gives a very foundational and baseline exposure because that's part of it. We threw out a survey and got feedback, but we really need to do some additional marketing and explanation with our kids. So Intro to AIG would be a first one. We have time built in for Jacob over the summer to get some of the work done, and it feels like we could implement this with minimal expense other than just the career or the course development throughout the summer. I'll pause for any questions, and I'll be honest, I am about one step ahead of you in understanding and learning about Intro to AIG, so you may ask a question that I don't know of yet.
I think in the
I'm a resilient learner.
No, that's good. In our last work session where you brought this up, you said you were also with some outside
Yep.
Other school districts, other, can you expand on that a little bit so we can, you're not just solely
Yeah, so we have a meeting with Jacob next Tuesday or Thursday, and, and he's ready. And so we currently have had meetings with the University of Minnesota Extension Office, some local industry partners, and then Tony, Chido, and Becca are also busy working, kind of putting their tentacles out into the industry and in Wright County areas to see how, what's out there for us to help build all of this. So we think we know at a first step level, and then Jacob has a pretty well-developed FFA connection, and he's ready to bring that to us as well. So those two, the courses and the programming, will be very interconnected. So we're trying to just be very purposeful and understand what we need to know as we build it so we don't get too far ahead of ourselves, where our eyes are bigger than what we can truly build in. Does that answer your question?
Additionally, Jacob has been a part of Buffalo, and he has taught some of these courses and has connections to the, and the staff there who, who he's got experience with, so he's as fresh as we are.
And did I understand you right that these would be phased in over this year, maybe not in September, but?
For sure, we, we have a schedule, we have a spot in our schedule to
Oh, it's probably September.
We're looking to really baby-step into it to get Jacob in front of kids, and he will also partner with Becca for some other programming that we know we need. So it feels like, kind of go two, two routes with him to get him a full schedule right away.
And then is this a prerequisite to the other programs?
Will be eventually, because what we would anticipate is that we will be back here with kind of that second level of AIG classes that we would like to bring in. All of the, none of these require a prereq except for one of the ones, the third class I'll show you. That requires a biology, but the kids can take that concurrently. So that's the only class that is a ten, twelve class. All of these are nine, twelve electives.
Thank you.
Companion in animal science, again, an introductory-level type of class, very minimal. You can see our target audience, you can see who we're, where we would put this. This would maybe be a try-two, where we don't have to be aside as often with the elements, but it would be a good, again, introductory level, gives exposure. And there's a description of it. Again, these two and the third one all will align to MDE Career and Tech Ed frameworks that we will absolutely mirror what we build, so it, it meets all the requirements from MDE for us to work with Tina for her reimburseables. The third one is Energy and Natural Resources Sciences. This is the one that I was referencing where it's a ten, twelve elective. It will, students will have to have biology as a prereq, but they can take it concurrently. We may or may not get to this one as we're still, we are still working to build our schedule next year, and so this is one we're just kind of maybe going to keep in our back pocket, but we know it's one that we want to bring in. So I don't know that this one will be implemented. If it will, it will be later in the school year or the beginning of next year. We know it's one we want to bring, so we want to do the work now. You can see our target audience, and then I'll, here's our job, our course descriptions as well. In all three of these course descriptions, I should highlight, there is definitely a career focus that we are trying to be very purposeful when we talk about course programming. So as we sit on the other end of education, and we talk about the littles coming in and building their skills, academic and socially-emotional skills, we're taking that same approach, and we're referencing those vital skills. What is it, what vital skills do you need to go out and to employable person? And so where you see here, all of these have that layer in it. Who's intelligent career kind of focus that this could step you into what path out there? And we know that those things, the skill development, the technicals, the education, all blends to make a really intentional pathway for our kids as they exit our school district. And then the fourth one is Unified, Unified Agriculture. Unified remembers our programming that aligns Gen Ed students with students with disabilities, and we feel like this one would be a high interest. We have a very passionate, compassionate school environment, we feel. If you remember, a couple months ago, we came with Unified FACS. We're going to be running that, that, we could have run three or four sections of that this year. So we know that our students really gravitate towards unified programming, and so we want to put this in our back pocket as well, feeling like we could fill this one, students know what Unified AIG really means. So this would be one very similar to FACS where it has a little bit of exposure from multiple areas under the agricultural kind of pathway. But again, it's blending that AIG idea with Gen Ed students and students with disabilities. So this would probably be a spring class because there is some outdoor components to the course content. This is one that would not fall under the MDE Career and Tech Ed reimbursables, but it falls under our philosophy of a unified approach. So that's a lot of information. That's four courses that we would like to ask for approval to implement at some point starting in the fall of twenty-four, twenty-five. As I had said earlier, I think we have time allocated this summer for Jacob to come in and really start to develop the course requirements.
Are there questions and discussion from the board for Principal Hansen?
I think it's great. I think it's a group of students that we probably aren't meeting some of their needs or some of their interests, and I think, I think it's important. I mean, every school used to have this, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Jacob would tell us that Monticello had it forty, forty years ago. Matt or I cannot deny or endorse that, but he would say that long ago, it was, it was a pretty robust program, and we feel like it's a niche between, we have very innovative staff in the FACS department, we have very dedicated, innovative staff in the Tech Ed department. This has an opportunity to kind of straddle two worlds and, and fill a niche for our kids that we know is, are underserved. So that's truly what we're trying to do, and we bring this kind of programming to you.
Just, you know, as I look at those classes and listen to you, Ms. Hansen, I absolutely get excited for some of the traditional classes, but then also that futuristic looking and that real-time looking of the, the energy and natural resources. I mean, it doesn't take you long to look in a paper. Right now, I drive by a solar garden every day, and my hometown is reopening the state park of Hill and Ex Mines, and, and both are very, very vital to Minnesota. And like giving our kids a passion that leads to an amazing career, career pathway, two different ones, but they were both in that class and can be seen, felt, touched. I mean, it's, it's remarkable.
That's one of our goals, as we talk about, you know, our goals coming up next, our pathways, trying to get kids exposure to education beyond just our four walls in the high school, and I think this kind of checks a box with that as well.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for your guys' servant attitudes towards our community and our students, and really working hard during a difficult time when we're switching you to trimesters, you have a million things going on right now in your lives, to bring something that's of this value to all of us. It's not just, it's, you're bringing it to our community too, not just our students, and so you'll be making a big impact.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo what, what Jamie Seaborn has said as well, that you guys have really taken the CTE and run with it at a pace that I think astonishes all of us. We thought, you know, maybe we'd implement this stuff over many years, and you've been able to do that in a very compressed amount of time, which is very impressive, and we thank you for that because more students will have access to it sooner than if we spent a long time talking about it. So it's good that you have a do-it mindset.
We appreciate that, and we just know there's a lot of staff that are willing to lean in and reevaluate in what our students are telling us, so, so we're trying to really be mindful of.
Any other questions or comments? So members, these four courses are before us for approval for the high school. Do I hear a second? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by Jamie Seaborn, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the four agricultural courses as presented by Principal Hansen, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And Mr. Colwell, I'm sorry. It was kind of her presentation. Motion passes six, zero. He's very supportive.
Give you something. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to continue to have Principal Colwell and Principal Hansen up at the podium to discuss the goals for the Monticello High School for twenty-three, twenty-four. They're going to update us on how last year went.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity just to review some of the stuff. One of my favorite parts of graduation, to kind of tie these two presentations together, was the slideshow of the valedictorians, and remember about twelve out of the fifteen kids, when they said, favorite part, what do you, what do you, not want to lose it to high school, it was unified, right? And they had very firm beliefs, I guess, to their core with regards to why it was important to come to school and the connection they made at the unified graduation. There were more tiers there than there was throughout the part of the year just because the, and almost all the tiers are coming from the Gen Ed kids who've made such strong connections with so many of their friends in the special ed world. So it ties to wanting to be at school and wanting to be there for the people around you, obviously to, to learn, right? Coming to a meaningful place with the classes we're trying to cover, but it ties to graduation. It ties to wanting to get everyone across the stage and attendance rates and all those things. So it all connects in some way, shape, or form, and to echo what Lori said about, you know, the earliest learners and Kristin's presentation, so many commonalities between what's going on at Eastview and what's going on at the high schools. So we'll zip through some of our goals and just kind of a recap of the year. A big part of our goal is graduation, right? And just the percentage, we want to get as many kids, if not all of them, across the stage that we can every year, and that's a big part of ten-thousand-foot view and the world's best workforce goals and all the things. We don't find out our graduation rates until March, or actually late in spring, and so this last March, we found out what their previous year's graduation rates were. They came in at ninety-five point eight, but we're going to continue to work on it. That's one of the primary reasons why we have kids at high schools, to get them that diploma and set them on a path for success into their future with whatever that might be. So that is one of the primary components in addition to just growing and learning as professionals and promoting student engagement and success. So it kind of summarizes what our primary goals were, just instructionally there. If I want to go to the next one. How we did it was centered around MTSS, so two components there in regards to what our staff were working on, what students were doing, and primarily that tier-one focus of just being best-practice instruction, most meaningful, biggest bang for your buck in the classroom. That was what we started out intending to do, and we did dig into it pretty hot and heavy up until about February, when a lot of our time and effort transitioned to the change that you're talking about, Jamie, with trimester courses and people's focused efforts to get that pulled off in this shorter winter. courses and people's focused efforts to get that pulled off in this shorter window than most schools would have done. But the best practice, tier one instruction was the primary focus of the cohort model that we implemented at the high school. And we tied that to the collective efficacy component where we're just trying to learn from the experts from within and all be pointing in the same direction and leaning on all of our strengths. So they, they were in their cohorts, they were meeting continuously throughout the school day. And then we had a number of PD options and sessions before and after the school year and during the school year as we had different workshops. And then tier, go back on the tier two component to MTSS. We feel like, and I think Jason Welch echoed it the other day, we made pretty significant gains in providing and leveraging and creating more interventions for students than we ever have. Just having more tools in our toolbox to help students achieve success, especially some of the struggling students. So we felt like it was a good year in the MTSS role at the high school, but there's quite a ways to go yet with regards to that. That last bullet down there just talks about data. We, we sometimes struggle to find consistent data. We talked to Cindy about next year, maybe bringing in Fastbridge in the ninth grade more consistently. It's something that hasn't been done in the past, just to get ongoing data with regards to how much students are learning and gaining traction. And so data is not something that's super easy to find at the high school level on a, on a consistent measure, you know, that formative data. But it is something we want to continue to build. Some of the themes our staff would have heard quite often was just to lean on the, our collective efficacy and learning from each other. It's been a very departmentalized building previous, the last few years. And so we're trying to get the departments and the staff to know more about each other from a, staff would have told us that student engagement is one of their top priorities. They, they feel like they want students more engaged in class and be more excited. It connects to their passions and their pathways and whatnot, but that is something that we've brought back to staff in a number of ways to make sure they know that choice is important. We've always talked about being very transparent with our plan and what we want to do, setting out the year to what we feel like we can accomplish. And so that was a common theme and staff should know and why behind what we're doing and what we are doing. And then we would say we're very good at making connections with, with students, but we want to capitalize on that to see the gains in the learning, right, in the classroom outcomes that are happening. So creating safe spaces with all the things for all students and capitalizing on the relational side of it as well. And then periodically we try and like to have fun. And that's one of the things that we don't want to lose either. Some of the day to day gets kind of wearing at times, but we want to continue to do that. Specific strategies and how to do some of those things. The teacher evaluation model was built with specific measurables as to what good instruction would look like. So we use that pretty strategically, I guess, pretty intentionally. So that staff saw what it should look like to do some of those best practices in the classroom. The Student Center staff played a really large part and a big role. Our counselors, our social workers, our dean, our behavior specialist, the school psychs in developing interventions and meeting with them frequently every morning, Monday mornings to fill out some of those interventions. And so they were a very important part to what we got done. And then the implementation of EduClimber, which is an online program that tracks our data, behavioral data, attendance data, different things that we, information we can put in and then it shows us our outcome on a greater scale that we might miss if we're just looking at it individually. So the use of EduClimber has been really important this year and we have good data now coming out of the year to be able to guide us into next year as well. And that is, that was something new. Continued to want to involve students as much as we can in their education and how the school looks, feels and runs, and even to help tutor themselves. We've got a peer tutoring program that Tony Chido helps with and has built. And that's been very successful. A lot of students really like the time working with older students and getting help in different Credit recovery is going to be a change, right, for next year and just having the AOP in the building. That's something that we decided here kind of earlier in the spring. And that really changes how we're going to do some stuff and our flexibility and being able to normalize those students' path and what they're going to be able to do in the high school they previously wouldn't, which again will directly tie to graduation and attendance rates, which is part of their rationale as to why we want to bring them in. And shout out to David Reeves and the work he's doing up until and will continue to do, meeting with him again today, really making some, some big strides in what the programming will look like, not only physically, but just with systems and these buildings, the staff. And then we're trying to just make students aware of their attendance at a building level, individual level, and making it more for parents. And so just not wanting to shy away from some of that data, making sure people see where the building is at and not hiding that and seeing it on the street. Just trying to normalize students to see what our goals are and how they can help improve it, obviously. And then the next slide just ties to what we have done and what we look forward to doing in the, in the next school year. So it's continuing with MTSS, continuing, continuing with our cohorts. The change of start times is going to offer us something very different, obviously with regards to when we can meet with staff before school. So our instructional leadership team, which is ILT, the departments, cohorts and staff meetings will all be taking place before school. We just have more time. You guys heard that before. We do want to keep working on family engagement and both of us had a little bit of a aha coming out of graduation where we do, and we pull out emphasis, emphasis on homeroom and advisors and the connections they make with students over the four years. As we stand there in front of the whole, you know, audience and all the graduates talking about their advisor walking in on the stage and shaking their hand and that relationship over four years, there's a real opportunity there, not only to connect with the student, but the family. And that was something that we wanted to keep building on, just family engagement. And so it seemed like a natural place to do that moving forward. We want to keep enhancing that. So we don't have some of the phone calls that sometimes come where a parent will say, how come no one's ever told me my students had a D, they're not a D student, why haven't you not been communicating with me? And we want to get in front of that in a better way. So it's kind of multifaceted, but family engagement is going to be something we want to build on that is connected to MTSS. And then just ongoing research, we're starting to frame out and build out what our PDs can look like for next year now and focusing on just what's happening in the classroom with all learners, who include some of the learners that are learning in very diverse ways and need extra supports or need a specific class that they're more interested in than others. So really focusing on our, our staff and their PD with regards to what a diverse learner needs. And then we have work to do with regard to, seeing some of the work with the handbook, our syllabi in particular, to be more consistent throughout the building. And so we want to keep that in front of our staff too, with regards to school-wide systems and being consistent across the board. And the last bullets, just that career in college focus and to keep looking for different ways to build and enhance, to provide for those students. Every year we get a few students that want to drive their tractor to school. I had another request here this year, it was fun, and he did, a couple buddies drove their big tractor to school and parked it out in the parking lot and they were very respectful. But there's an example of students that have, we're going to try and meet those unique students' needs as well. And not only meet their needs, but give them some excitement and background, some passion to take and run with them in the next chapter of life. So it's fun. It's good, it's good work. Yeah, we'll just take time. Any questions?
We had a comment about staff meetings with the new time change, saying that's going to be more difficult to do with the new changes.
Oh, it'll be easier.
Easier, okay, I just want to make sure.
Always been after school.
Yep.
Staff are itching to go places and do things. Now we have time before. Yep, contractual day and we were very motivated to get done in about 30 minutes, but now we'll just have more time for it. Be more consistent with it.
Anyone else have any comments for Principal Colwell? Thank you very much, Principal Colwell, for that detailed look at, look back at what you guys have been working on this year. Appreciate that and we'll see you next year. Moving ahead to item D, we're going to welcome the Director of Human Resources, Mr. Rob Daniker, to the podium to discuss substitute pay raise or pay change, rate change. I can't say that properly. Welcome, Mr. Daniker.
Chair Zebarath, member of the board, Superintendent Olson. So yeah, this is on the agenda titled subrates for 24, 25, but it's actually not only substitute rates, but also the activities and community ed hourly rates as well. Each year we bring this to the board for update and approval. This year, there were not a tremendous amount of, of updates being proposed. Starting on the top, which is on the screen right now, we are proposing adjusting the long-term subrate. And the, the long-term subrate is tied to, directly to the teacher contract, which was settled at a higher amount, so that reflects that. The on calls, short call subrate, again, that's just looking at market rates. And then we also, we had not previously addressed deans of students and then also below principals. But we do have a roster of individuals, some of whom who've retired from the district recently, who serve in those capacities. And again, using market rates and comparisons to establish new rates for those. Towards the bottom of the front page, there's also a proposed adjustment for ESS subrates for educational assistance and then also for food services. And again, those are based off of market rates and comparisons. On the second slide of the document is the activities and community ed hourly rates, and there are no proposed changes for any of those this year after conversation and consideration with both Director Mack and Director Revenek. And so this would be an action item for the board tonight, Chair.
Are there any questions for Mr. Daniker from the board members? Any discussion? Okay, this is an action item and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hegley to approve the new pay scale for substitutes and community activities as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion passes six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to hear from our activities director, Mr. Gary Revenek, is going to give us an update on activities and the Mississippi Eight activity fees and gate fees. Welcome, Mr. Revenek. Good to see you again.
Thank you. All right, I not prepared PowerPoint. I was hoping Rob wouldn't have anything to show because I wouldn't be the only one. But I'm just standing in front of you as a proud activities director, just want to give you a quick update of things that happened this spring at the high school. I'm going to start out with our concerts. I know some of the board members, I saw you at concerts, but our choir concert, band concert and orchestra concerts were all amazing. They just did a phenomenal job representing our school. So proud of all of our students in the music program. And then we had a senior send off pep fest. And if you haven't been to one of those, I highly recommend that you come to our pep fest. It went really well and we do a really nice job sending our seniors off on their last day of school, making them feel special and just proud to be a part of that. As far as the Mississippi Eight conference goes, there's nine sports in the spring and there's nine schools in the Mississippi Eight conference. We won five conference championships and at our last meeting, I wasn't a very popular guy because they were frustrated that we were winning everything, which is a nice problem to have. So we won the conference, I don't want to mess this up, but we won in tennis, we won in boys lacrosse for the first time in school history. We won the conference title in golf for the second straight year. We won in both boys and girls track and boys track hadn't won since the eighties. So they were pretty excited to win the conference for the first time in over 30 years. So with that, just to have my, my notes here from the pep fest and I don't want to miss anything, so I'm just going to do a quick update. Adaptive bowling, we sent nine bowlers to the state tournament, which was amazing. And Maddie Devote placed seventh, so she medaled at the state tournament. So she was our only medalist, but she did an amazing job, placed seventh overall in the state. Boys tennis, I mentioned, we were co-conference champs. For only the third time in school history, we, we won the conference. And Ryan Shima, who was a senior, advanced to the state tournament. He actually was the individual champion for our section. Ryan had a great tennis career playing for the Monticello Magic. Our trap team finished in second place. They're not part of the Mississippi Eight conference. It's, it's a big statewide conference. They're put into different groups and we took second. And Lance clearly has advanced to the state tournament and that, he's the last athlete still participating this spring for the Magic. That will be this coming weekend. The team was in Alexandria last, at the end of last week and that is still going on right now. We haven't qualified as a team to make it to the state tournament, but talked to our trap coaches tonight and we were in a position to advance and unfortunately some schools outperformed us here. And we've been edged out now as they're wrapping up the qualifying for the state tournament. So our trap team had an excellent spring as well. Softball, we finished third in the Mississippi Eight conference. We won our first section game over Big Lake. That was a fun night watching them win that first game. And then they were defeated, they got beat out their next two games at sections. But great season by our softball team. Baseball, another strong season. We finished 17 and nine and we advanced to the section championship. We lost it to Tino Grace and they are in the state championship game. That was supposed to be today. It was kind of rained out and they're going to play now hopefully on Friday. So obviously we lost to one of the top teams in the state. Boys lacrosse, first conference title in, in school history. So that was pretty special. We ended the season 10 and 5. We made it to the section semifinals. We played at St. Michael, ended up losing to them and, and so that was a tough loss, but a great season. Girls lacrosse also, they ended eight and seven. They made it to the section semifinal for only the second time in school history. And they finished second in the conference, so they had a great season. Boys golf, won the conference and Tommy Dish, who's a senior at Monticello High School, was the top golfer in the conference. So he was the individual champion overall. Our team advanced to the section finals, first time since I've been AD that the entire team advanced. We did not qualify, obviously, to make it to the state tournament, but just a great, impressive season by the boys. Girls golf, we finished second in the conference, so they were just behind Becker. And Elena Opats qualified for the state tournament. I went and watched her play in Coon Rapids at, I think it was called Bunker Hill Golf Course. That was really fun having a player in the state tournament for golf. It was my first time attending because we hadn't had someone there for a while and I was really impressed with how good those girls were. I could not compete with them, that's for sure. And then finally track, our track season was unbelievable and I know some of you were there. Both boys and girls won the conference championship. Both won the section championship that we hosted, it was a two-day event. And then we went on to the state tournament. The girls had won the last two state titles. This year we finished second overall. Alexandria actually won it for girls. Just a, you know, fun group, exciting, watching all the talent in Monticello and the track program. We did have a relay win the state championship and last I heard, they were ranked 23rd in the nation. And that was our four by 200 with Sasha Steinbach, Casey Lilindal, Kayla and Amelia Skeestad. So two of those girls graduate, two of them will be back next year, but just an amazing track career for some of these seniors. That's my sports update. And then as far as the conference goes, there's a few things that we're not quite ready as ADs across the conference to bring anything to the board yet. We're discussing admission fees. We're discussing, do you still take cash at the gate? Some schools do, some don't, some are online only, credit card only. And right now we do both and I like it that way and we get a lot of compliments for that. So I have to have someone sitting there anyway to check their phone. I feel like I might as well take the cash so they don't have to pay extra fees and they could save some money by paying with cash. Other schools just don't want to mess with cash. So we're having those discussions and then we're also trying to figure out what, what are we going to charge? We haven't raised the rate for a long time. Do we want to continue at seven and five or is it time? and five, or is it time to raise that up a little bit? Sections, all the sections that we're in right now are ten for adults and five for students. So we have to decide as a conference what direction we want to go. Any questions?
I have a question about the fees. Do all the participants in the league have to be the same, and the conference have to accept, like if one, if you all decide to not accept cash, does everybody have to go along with that, or can each school do it their own way?
That's a good question. No, you can do it your own way, and we already did this year. But we do have to charge the same amount. And that's in our bylaws, and that's where it's a little bit sticky right now, because some schools want to go up, some schools want to stay the same, some are trying to pass a referendum in the fall. So, we're still discussing that, and that'll be addressed in August.
Any other questions for Mr. Revenig?
Yeah, when it comes to some of the, just from my information, some of the section events, and there are different schools, do you have to petition to become a whole school? And if you do become a whole school, of the money that's raised, so there's two competing schools at our location, what percentage of that gate fee do we keep? Does it go to the two schools, the ticket sales? How does that break down from a cost perspective?
So, yes, when you go to the region meetings, they're trying to find schools to host, and you're probably aware, we host more than probably any school, because I do enjoy hosting. How it works, all the revenue coming in at the gate goes back to the section. The section pays for all of the workers, so I have to do an expense report and list all of our workers. If it's an event that we might not be playing in, I can charge rental back to the region, so we can generate some money that way as a school. We get to keep the concession money, so we're making some money on that, but the gate money goes back to the section.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a punch card. So it's sixteen punches for seventy dollars right now. So it's about four dollars and seventy cents or something to get right now. So we currently have that. So that's an option for our fans if they want to buy a punch card. And that gets them in at everything except for hockey.
Take advantage of that?
Yeah. Yeah, we have quite a few. So they come in, they show us their card, and we punch it at the gate. Yes. Yep. Another thing that schools are discussing right now, that Mr. Olson and I discussed, some of the schools in the conference let all senior citizens in for free. We let Monticello senior citizens in. When they stop by the activities office and get a gold pass, they get in for free. But we charge senior citizens from other communities. So, the grandparents that are coming from Becker, Big Lake over here still pay. We're looking at possibly letting all senior citizens in for free, too. That's something we're discussing. I'd say right now, half of the schools do that and half don't. Yeah, well, that might be at the state tournament level. Yeah, in the state, yeah. So, no, it's, it's decided by the school board.
Can you discuss how a given district is chosen to host sectionals?
Which school district?
Yeah. So you say that we have hosted a lot of them. So is, do you apply for a certain sport, and then is there, how do they make the determination?
Well, they look at facilities, who has nice facilities, who's capable, who's organized to run an effective and efficient tournament. Like, for baseball this year, out of the eight teams, only like three fields were considered section final worthy, if that makes sense. And thankfully, we have one of them. So we hosted for the second time in three years, because schools want to come to Monticello. Track, our track coaches are amazing. Our facility is amazing. It's separate from the turf field, and everybody just wants to come to Monticello. And our coaches are like, do we have to host again? I'm like, yeah, I like hosting. So, hopefully, I think we're going to host one more year, and then somebody else can take a turn. But people, some of the other schools are afraid to take on such a big task, if that makes sense. See, the reason we get to host like state soccer, state football, is because of our beautiful facility, and our bleachers are so close to the field. Everyone's like, oh, we want to come to Monticello. We don't have the track around our turf field. So when you're at other venues, the view in the stands is not as good as in Monticello. So they want to come here. Our basketball in the fieldhouse, we can hold more than any school in the area. When we put the end bleachers in, we had the section final in boys this year with St. Michael and Rogers. Put the end bleachers in, we had over thirty-five-hundred people there. Other schools can't host that many, so they want to come here.
I would say I've been on the section committee as superintendent rep. That's a rotating basis. I'm not always on it, but on a rotating basis. And everything that Gary said is like, we are a site that people are seeking, which is really a feather in our cap, and it's a feather in the organization structure that Gary puts forth for those, so that they know that when they come here, they're getting a first-class event. And it really is all about tradition of success, of who can host those things, those events in a very productive and successful way. So, yeah, no other way. It's not a rotating basis, and so, I mean, that's a really good question, Casey and Kathy know, to dive into that, so you can tell people, no, it's because of, you know, it's our facilities, number one, but then it's the organization that Gary puts forth, and he's able to put forward a great product.
One venue that, our ice arena is not big enough for a section final. We host a semifinal, and there's about a thousand people there, and it's packed, nine hundred to a thousand. When you get to the section final, we go to Elk River. It's the biggest arena in the area, along with St. Cloud, and we're fortunate to go to Elk River, and they'll hold over two thousand people there.
Any other questions for Mr. Revenig? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Revenig, for your update.
Thank you.
And we'll see you the next time. Now, we'd like to welcome Director of Business Services Tina Burkholder to the podium. She's going to give us a couple of presentations on budget and food vendors, and these are action items for the board. Welcome, Ms. Burkholder, and thank you.
Yep.
Well, I guess there's three in the ten-year plan, too.
Yeah, but I'll have company. Board members, thank you for having me. I have a couple items, as Kathy mentioned. First is our adopted budget for next year. I included all the slides that I presented from May and last board meeting, but I'm only going to touch on some of them. I did a couple updates, too, since the last PowerPoint. But we're finally in June, and we're ready to approve next year's budget. And in our general fund, let me get to the summary slides. Keep it more high-level. I should have put them in front. Aller's assumptions. So with our general fund, almost there. There we go. Our revenues are at fifty-nine point six million, and our expenses at sixty million. Made a couple changes based on the CTE programs that we were going to have next year, including that egg teacher, and based on the schedule where teachers were landing, and how many sections they were teaching, made those changes internally, added the extended days that are happening over the summer, and just taking a final look at everything, making sure I didn't miss anything. But on the revenue side, a lot of the changes coming in from last year is having more grants that we're taking advantage of. We're shifting our special ed programs from the co-op to Monticello schools, so that's generating more state aid and the cross subsidy. On the expense side, again, we're adding additional staffing for special ed needs, and then also shifting the programs from the co-op to Monticello. So we will have expenses exceeding revenues by four hundred and fifty-two thousand, bringing down our fund, overall fund balance, to seven point two million. And then that unassigned fund balance should end up around eight point six percent. Our next fund is the co-op, and that is a break-even fund. And this had some decreases from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They did some right-sizing with their staffing, and then there was also that shifting from the co-op to Monticello. So their revenues and expenses coming out are ten point, almost ten point six million, seven million. But it's a break-even fund. They are employed our employees. They pay us for the employees and any supplies that they purchase on our P-card system. So again, it's a neutral overall And then on the special revenue funds, food service, we have estimated number of breakfasts and meals, one hundred ninety-two thousand in breakfast meals, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand in lunch meals that anticipate on having next year. Meals are free again, and depending on the student makeup, if they are on a paid status, free status, or reduced status, it determines what we get from the state or federal government on meals reimbursed. We're also moving away from contract management and moving towards self-op, so we'll have no expenses going to a contract company. We will have our nutrition service director on here. We added some time to our head cooks and second cooks, so they can have a little more time to plan and make sure we have a successful program our first year. And then also, I added a position for our nature base, and then our cooperative programs that are going to be at our ALP site, delivering those meals versus our custodians, so that they can do point-of-sale at the school sites, nature base, and the co-op sites versus a teacher or a pair doing that point-of-sale, because they would have to have training as well. It's a state requirement for anybody that's involved in food service. At a minimum, they have to have four hours of training. So it's best to have our food service employees that are trained to do that versus somebody that's not their everyday job. And when the state comes in to monitor, they're more likely to go to the sites that aren't your normal sites. They want to see how you're doing outside of the norm. So, we want to make sure we have staff in place for that.
Can I ask a question about the four hours of training? Was that of the people that are in this new position, delivering meals, they already had that four hours of training? Or was that something they had to do on top of?
So every year, our food service staff has to have training. Our cook's helper, at a minimum, they have to have four hours of training. And we cover that right away at our August welcome-back session. We have everybody there for six hours. So our head cooks and our second cooks, they have to have more training time. Previously, without a food service director, I had to have twelve hours of training. So depending on your role determines the amount, but we try to right away have the six hours done across all positions. Our community ed fund is going to have another similar year as this year, twenty-three, twenty-four. We're going to have consistent programs and numbers for preschool, our magic adventures, childcare, and other community ed programming that's going on within that fund. So there's many different programs within the community service fund. We have ECFE, we have adult basic ed, school readiness, all making up that fund balance. So it is broken down in more detail in the budget book, if you want that information. And then our hockey fund is next. And again, another break-even fund, similar operations, ice time concessions is the bulk of the revenue coming in. The expense is out. We have our ice arena manager, our assistant ice arena manager, and some custodial time. And the payments out, that the Monticello Youth Hockey Association pays towards the building, and any repairs and such that needs to happen as well, all comes out of that fund. And if there is a surplus, we split that fifty-fifty with the Monticello Youth Hockey Association. But if there is a deficit at the end of the year, then the hockey association has to reimburse the fund to make it whole. Our other funds, so our debt service fund, our mortgage account, basically has our property tax levy coming in to cover the bond payments, the principal and interest payments, and then a little bit of bond fees that go along with managing those bonds. But overall, just a little bit of a surplus adding to the fund balance, and just under a million of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand in our fund balance. And again, state looks at the fund balance every year, make sure it's not too high, because we do have to levy a hundred and five percent of our bond payments, to make sure if there is delinquent payments towards property taxes, that the levy coming in covers those bond payments. So once it gets too high, that debt excess reduction comes in to reduce that levy a little bit, so that we're not making money in the service fund. And then our internal service fund is for our self-insurance with our dental insurance plan. We have that with health partners, and right now, we're in the bidding process to go up for the next year. But assuming, based on claims, that we might see another two to three percent in our premiums that we'll have to charge to cover the claims and fees that are happening. But just under twenty thousand of a surplus, ending about two hundred and sixty-one thousand. And that's just under a three-month fund balance, where that's our target. And our insurance committee reviews this as part of our meetings, as well as they look at our health insurance trends as well. And our last fund is our other post-employment fund. And this has to account for all of the accounting for retiree obligations, regardless if the contracts have sunset language or not. But the trust itself only pays for retiree obligations that do not have the sunset language. So that two hundred and ten thousand are the retirement obligations that do not have the sunset clauses. The rest, we levy for. So, at the time, we had, I thought I had it in here, the retirees that were known, since this budget was developed, I know there's been a couple retirements that have come forth, but that's not included in this estimate. It was back in late April when this was done. So about one point eight million in revenue or contributions coming in, offset with the contributions going out. But again, that two hundred and ten is just the retirement obligations going out that do not have the sunset language, where our trust will be under a million at nine hundred and twenty-seven So those are high-level, all the funds that we talked about in May and June, and it's ready for adopting. If you don't have any questions.
Is there any discussion from the board for Ms. Burkholder?
I asked my fifteen questions at the last meeting.
Okay, members, we have the budget presented to us as it is. We have a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of the budget presentation approval as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Thank you.
All right, the next item is our prime food vendor for next year. So with state statutes, depending on what the threshold is and how much you're spending, you either have to do quotes or sealed bids. So we did do a seal request for proposal bid process with prime food vendors, because we do spend more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand in a given year on food. So we did advertisements in the Monticello Times on May ninth and May sixteenth, and proposals were due to us on June sixth. And also, direct emails were sent out to prime food vendors that I knew about and heard from other school districts. So Cisco Foods, who is our current provider, and Upper Lakes Foods, were notified to submit proposals. And then, in the proposal process letter to them, it talked about how they would be evaluated based on price and customer service. Typically, schools do their top thirty to fifty, sixty items on their mostly-used products in a given year. So I did our top sixty, and then- And then based on that, you have to give them a specific week on what price, on when they should give you a price. And so I think it was early April that they had to use that week of whatever, if they had those 60 items, what was the price that they sold or bought their food items for. And so on June 6th, only Cisco Foods submitted a proposal while Upper Lakes Food declined to submit a proposal. They said that they, based on our capacity needs, that they couldn't fulfill it. They're a smaller company compared to Cisco Foods. So we did get a proposal for Cisco Foods. So we do have food for next year, happy to say. So I'm asking for approval from the board to approve Cisco Foods as our prime food vendor for the 24-25 school year.
Is there any questions or discussion from the board for Brookholder on the food vendor for next year?
Oh, yeah, I just had one question. So our, I guess our previous food vendor, we're still trying to figure out some things with them. Are there provisions put in place, those food vendors who don't run the same issues that we're going through right now?
Well, it's different because the contractor, they're, it's based on a per meal price where the prices for food is determined based on the market basket that we have and what they get food for.
Any other questions or discussion from the board? So we have before us a motion to approve Cisco Foods as our prime food vendor for the 23-24, I'm sorry, 24-25 school year.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Jamie Seaman. All those in favor of approving Cisco Foods as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
All right, and our last item, I'll invite Terry up to the podium with me to talk about our 10-year plan. So in the spring of 2015, legislation approved a new revenue for schools called long-term facility maintenance. In order to receive these funds, schools have to approve a 10-year plan. And the funds are for like-for-like things. It can't be for remodeling or new items. The top 20 to 25 size school districts, they get to levy and approve as much as they need or as much as the board allows. But for the rest of us, we only get $380 per pupil that generates that long-term facility maintenance revenue. And it gets prorated down if you have newer buildings that are younger than an average of 35 years or newer. So our buildings are older, so we get the full 380 per pupil. And so within this process, there are many materials that you have to submit with your 10-year plan. You have a revenue projection, which is included in the materials. So it looks at your revenue, your enrollment estimates and projects that out. And so for Monticello, back in 2015, we also approved two long-term facility maintenance bonds at the same time as our referendum bonds to address a lot of our needs. So some of our long-term facility revenue that comes in has to pay for those two bonds. They were 15-year bonds. So you'll see in the revenue projection spreadsheet that in 2032 and 2033, you see an increase of revenue that we get to utilize towards our needs. Another handout is the expense sheet where you have to look at the revenue projection coming in and then place projects that are happening in that 10-year plan. You can own, it has to be an affordable plan. We have many needs across all buildings, but you can't put all the needs on there. You have to show that you have a fund balance going from year to year. You can't bleed it and go 20 minutes in the hole. You have to, it has to be somewhat positive. So we also included the projects that are included in the 10-year plan. And then we have a listing started that shows the other needs that aren't on our 10-year plan. So our greatest need are roofs. And so we're not quite getting to all the roofs. That's taking up a lot of our 10-year plan. And we still have a lot of other needs that we need to get to. But again, that revenue doesn't cover all of it. There's a question to add, Terry, but...
No, like Tina said, I mean, we have a lot of needs and we're going to continue to build that list out. You know, hopefully we can get the legislature to kind of come to bat for us and maybe we get some more money down the road. But yeah, we have high priority needs with our roofs and facades. Again, it's a livable document. I mean, things will change as other things come up. I know that, for instance, Matt, you have an elevator that's archaic and you can find parts for. So we need to completely, we need to completely renovate that thing. That came up this year. So again, things are going to pop up. I think it's important to take a look at our facade and our roof. But if other things come up, we may have to change some things up and change the projects up. So it's just mind-boggling that you can go, you know, 20 minutes down the road and there is money coming out of every part of... It's just mind-boggling that we are sitting here and we don't have enough funds to maintain our buildings and our facilities. It's huge disservice. And, you know, Tina and I will continue to build out the plan and change as needed. But yeah, it's a daunting task.
I share your frustration, Terry. I sat in a meeting and heard some discussion about the roof situation across all of our buildings. And I think I asked Tina if we were to properly, I mean, to the extent, this isn't an elective fix, there are buckets, you know? And there are students in areas where we have leaks so bad that we have buckets out. And to me, that's completely unacceptable that we are not able to fix our roofs to the point that we have to have buckets out. And so when I asked Tina, how much would it cost if we, you know, you wouldn't do this on your house at home. You wouldn't leave a bucket in your kitchen forever. You would say, I have to fix the roof. And I believe you said it would be many millions, several million, two or three million dollars to more than that, three and a half. To fix all of our building roofs properly.
Probably about 1.3 million in facade needs right now and probably 12 million dollars currently with our roofs.
If we fix them to the proper level of done.
Yep, and those are priority one needs right now. So that will grow as the other sections of the roofs deteriorate.
And so this is an area where board members, we have an opportunity to bring forth resolutions for the School Board Association to bring to the legislature this year. And this cap, as I understand it, is an area where we might be able to make some headway with our lobbyists at the School Board Association to see if they can lift that cap and bring a little more revenue in to help us in districts that have older buildings. And so that's something I would like for us to maybe consider as we move into the fall, is thinking about bringing forth a resolution. And maybe Tina, you could help us with the research on that so that we put it together properly for the School Board Association to bring it forward. So I do share your frustration with that because I just don't think it's right.
We'd have to do that this summer because I think...
Yeah, we do.
Those are due September 10th or 15th.
So let's put that, I mean, if we had to just do one as a board, I think that would be one that other districts could also get behind and have older buildings that are caught by this cap. And I think it's an area where potentially we could have some bipartisan agreement at the legislature and loosen up some of that money so that we can fix our buildings properly. So you have anything you want to add about that in terms of, okay? It's just an area that I see that, that's the only, when I look at how can we fix this, that's the only influence that I think we have as a board. So that is, being that that is one of our options, I think we should exercise it and see if we can at least bring it forward as a priority item to the legislature.
So on the revenue sheet, the money coming in is a state aid and levy mix. Depending on different formulas that include our property tax levy.
Is the operation right now? It is. It is fixed. It's working. It's just that the parts are becoming hard to find because they're no longer made. It's an older elevator. There's our needed. It might just take a while to get the parts. But like I said, it's an older elevator and...
Do we know if there's any grant money we could look at? Because that serves some of our disabled students. Is there any grant money that we could look at federally or state to offset that?
Look.
Elevator doesn't work. I think they...
Yeah, it's... You can't get upstairs or you can't get down, you know, today. So I think probably three. And sometimes it was a 36-hour fix.
So I believe it's on our plan to fix next year. We just need to make sure we get at least two quotes, you know, comply with state statutes and depend on when that happens. Based on lead time, it probably won't be able to be completely done by school year, but we'll try to figure out how we can best have it down and not impact.
I have asked other things. Here's the quote, are there things that we can do during the school year that aren't going to affect, you know, that can help us kind of bring it up slowly instead of, you know, having to do it all at once kind of a thing? So, but yeah. Just got added.
Okay. So we have before us the 10-year plan for action for the buildings and grounds that Tina has proposed. And I'll entertain a motion.
There's actually a resolution.
A resolution.
Evan has it on our screen.
Be resolved with the School Board Independent Statement Number 82. Excuse me. Statement sort of approves attached fiscal year 26 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan.
Second.
So the resolution read by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor proving the 10-year plan as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. 10-year plan is approved as written. Thank you. And then I think Terry is going to stay up at the podium and give us a summer construction update.
All right, well, the first one I will talk about is the roof project. We're at the high school. Tremco, if we can zoom this a little bit. We get these on a weekly basis, so it's kind of nice now when we talk to them, but they send this out. So we have it digitally as well. So basically, they have all the facade work done in red here. That includes the cleaning of the facade, the crack repair, the epoxy injection, and then the two coats of clear seal on everything. Originally, they were scheduled to be done on the 28th of June. And they were kind of running behind because of the weather. So they started working weekends to kind of catch up. So they'll actually be done on the 24th. So, yeah, they're actually in area G right now on that front portion. But all the other areas are done. And like I said, they are banging away on that front part of the building there, that facade part there. So, and it's kind of nice, they send pictures so you can see the guy applying the sealer coat. This is where they're working currently. You can kind of see that they're going to be cleaning this. And this is prior to cleaning. And then they had a little bit better picture, but you can kind of see they're cleaning it off and then they're putting new caulking around all that and cleaning this up. So, yeah, you can kind of see them working there, so. All right. Hit the back button. Oh, right here. This one? Perfect. All right. The tennis courts, that's another one that they got started on early for us. We're actually to a point now where we're five weeks away from finishing the project. They poured the wear layer last week on Wednesday. And now that's kind of the last thing that we need to do to let it sit for 28 days. After the 28 days, they can come back in and apply their finish on everything. So I think this week, they're going to be doing some restoration, again, weather permitted, coming back out, putting the fences back up, applying some curbing that was damaged, putting in tennis nets. And then again, we just got to sit and wait. And they can put the sealer on and paint everything up and working with Gary on getting some additional things done out there. I know he wanted some pickleball lines done, so they're going to do that for us. And he also wanted some, it seems like the tennis balls kind of fly from court to court. And he came up with, Lori and him came up with a little section of fencing we will be adding to stop the tennis balls from kind of going in wrong areas. But here's a couple pictures. Let's see. Actually have a video here I want to show you. So this is a 17-ton truck putting it, all the asphalt into, you can see putting their two-inch layer of asphalt down. He was just emptying there, so I had to stop the video. But it's kind of a neat process that they do. And yeah, they're bugging along for us. And here is just some, just some pictures of this kind of... And the rollers. So you had one guy going this way, you got another guy going in the opposite direction. And then you can kind of see what they're doing on the edges where the concrete that's there. Considering weather-related items, it's going, it's going good, so.
And it will be done in time for?
Yeah, in five weeks. It should be...
When they start practicing? I know that was a priority early on.
Yep, that'll be ready to go for the tennis team, so, yep.
Wholesome section events.
You know, I'll never forget, the first day I came here, that was the first thing Gary showed me. He's like, you've got to help me fix this. You have to. And then the next thing, my phone was ringing and who do we call? There's leaks in the roofs. Who do we call? Gary Kraft and Bruce and everyone? And I'm like, what is going on here? So I want to make it a priority to, you know, to get the things that we need to, you know, as Gary said, to host these big events and, you know, help our facilities out, so.
I even got to see Mr. Evnik asking a community member politely to take their roller blades off and stop roller blading on it for 26 more days at that time. But so I was...
Somebody was taking advantage of the...
They were taking advantage of fresh asphalt. And it was not me. And I just want to make sure you know that, so. And he did a great job of...
He was going to park his car out there and guard it.
He was.
Yeah. The next one is the ALP wall. The next one is the ALP wall at the high school for the ALP program, kind of getting transitioned into into the high school. We're building a wall in the east lecture room, and actually, the wall is up. Double D came out, installed the outlets. The inspector should be out tomorrow morning so that they can start hanging the drywall tomorrow, so. That one's going along there, too. The next one we have is the STEM lab here. I can, maybe I'll show you the notes from BCI. So again, they're going to, the scope of work is demo that, that, that block wall between the storage area and the classroom one fourteen. They're going to be cutting out two windows and a door section on the opposite end of that, on the other side of that, it's a, it's a closet, basically, into the other room. And then they're going to also tear up all the carpet, remove that carpet from that, on the opposite side of that wall, to where this partition wall is going to be going. We'll, we'll coat that with some sealer and wax. There's also going to be a wall framed up. We decided to keep the mechanical air handler in there so that there's a pass-through storage in there. There'll be one accordion style wall transitioning, giving them that barrier that they need. They're going to move one of those fume hoods that's, that's no longer needed, and then again, they're going to, they're going to polish that concrete in that space, and then that, that space where that wall was, they're now going to put a drop ceiling. So if I go back here, show you on the drawings. Yeah, here's the existing space, here's that wall they're going to demo out, they'll put a soffit in here, and that way they can hide, there's some duct work in here that we need to hide, and then this is what it'll look like when it's all done over here, so. This is a, this is a twelve weeks out, that wall, so that's not going to be done before the beginning of school. That'll probably be, that'll have to happen, and we've been communicating with Jeff and his team, that that'll have to happen after school starts at some point, but, yeah, everything else, make that space what they need. Dates, they will start July fifteenth, and August twenty-sixth, they'll be substantially completed, except for that wall part. Pinewood, they're doing, I believe it's twenty to twenty-four doors and hardware throughout the building. I was out there today, I thought they were going to get started today, and they might have gotten started, but I was out there at like seven AM. So they should be getting started on that, that's, that should be done the week of the Fourth of July. And that will finish out the building. I think this is the third year of the door replacement at that site, so that should, that should finish that site out completely.
That's for the Pinewood kitchen?
Nope, that's not the kitchen, that's, that's doors throughout the building. There's a bunch of doors down by the, the gym area, kind of in that area, that have not been replaced yet.
Interior doors?
Interior, interior doors, yep.
So I, sorry, I was jumping around there, I was trying to find the document. So on the cafeteria, you just mentioned that you jumped at, it said that the, look at their chart, it says that their punch list and their closeout is finishing nine-twenty-seven, which is after school starts.
On which one of you, are you on the cafeteria?
On their Gant chart. So, yeah, go to, go to the pre, or the pre-construction meeting under cafeteria, and right there, that link at the top.
That's not what they indicated to me, so I'll have to follow up with them on that.
But, yeah, because they show August sixteenth, but then they have their closeout nine-twenty-seven. So it's just because it's, you know, trying to, trying to do a punch list with kids getting food and stuff. Trying to get that all planned out. Maybe they're just going to be working right in the morning, I don't know, or maybe that's late in the afternoon, but it's, maybe something you can ask them, you know, are they going to finish that? Is that going to be late in the afternoon after the kids are done eating?
Yeah, I know, it would have to be, yeah, we're not going to disturb the kids.
Right, right, I just.
During the school day, so. That would have to be after, after hours then, so.
That link doesn't open for you up there? So go to construction meetings right there, yep? That link right there at the top.
Oh, this one? Oh, I didn't even see that one.
There you go. So then scroll down. So all the other ones are aligned, it's just this one, keep going down, there it was, second page.
What was that? Eighteen, final completion. Yeah, I don't under, I don't get that, zero days.
Yeah, so just maybe you can ask them about that, just to make sure that, that we, is this just an error on there with even the predecessors, and why it went out that far? Or do they truly plan on going until the end of September?
Yeah, that's a great question, I will ask for clarification on that. Okay, back to the drawing. Again, they're, they're going to be putting, Shelley wants to be able to have two lunches at one time instead of having just one, so she'll have kids coming in this way, kids coming in this way, coming out the middle door here, and then they actually changed the direction of this, they're adding a door here, and the kids will exit the lunchroom from here now, so that will help the flow out of the lunchroom, and it should speed up the kids getting back into class, so. This one was added a little bit later, but COOP's paying for it. Randy Hellman was actually the low bidder on this. We're just basically adding a, adding a door in room one oh two so that they can access one oh one. I believe it's a special ed space, and the paras that were helping out in that space, they're not going to have as many, so they need to have access to that room. So we're going to be adding that door for them. The calming room at, at Little Mountain. This one changed, originally they wanted a bathroom, but this changed, and basically we're just going to have this little calming room now, right here. Walls, some Florida ceiling pads, padded walls, and, yeah, adding a door there, so. Again, start July fifteenth, substantially complete August twenty. Little Mountain, again, they have these sidewalk paths leading to the playground on the sides of the building. Ron has been asking for these to be repaired for, for a long time, so you go out there and you take a look, and they are deteriorating. There's, the asphalt is, big sections just crumbling, it's just big chunks of asphalt, so we're going to be doing that. Working with them, trying to, again, it's all kind of weather-related, I've been communicating with this, this week, they've asked us, you know, how long do you, you know, how long of a lead time do you need to know if we're going to be coming? I'm like, just, just let us know, you know, just if it's a day before, great, you know, there's no activities in the building, so you can come, you can come sooner rather than later, so I'm working on getting them out. There's a sound wall at Little Mountain that is going to be going up, again, that, that's up, he's been, he kind of, he's been hopping back and forth between that site and the high school. Started at the high school, he's over there now, but again, the wall is up. Double D came out and added some outlet extensions in. Again, just waiting for the inspector, he should be out tomorrow, and then they can, they can, they can build that, that wall up. So it's a room next to a music or a choir room, and the teacher in that room, it's just, it's really loud, and it's, it's hard to concentrate, so they, they wanted a sound wall put in for that, so. The door fob, Jeremiah's kind of running with that, he's got that lined up for June twenty-seventh. Again, that's a door fobs for door three, that, that lead outside, and then the main office, just to kind of come and go, and that's something that they've been advocating for, for a while, so. That'll be a nice addition for, for them over there. And sidewalks, as you, if you go down to the ice arena, that sidewalk that kind of goes down that ramp, it's just, it's all deteriorating, it's just all falling apart. Randy Hellman was the low bidder on that, and we've tentatively start August the second week, I think the, is either the first or the second week in August, but it's kind of nice to have Randy come out and do some of these things, he's come in a lot, a lot more reasonable than a lot of these other companies that we've gotten quotes for, so it's nice to work with him and keep it local, so. And he's just a phone call away, and he picks up every time we call him, so.
Questions for Terry from the board on the summer update? No more questions for you, Terry.
All right, perfect, thanks, just trying to clear all this stuff out, so.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Now we're going to ask Mr. Daniker to come back to the podium, and we're going to go through some policies and building handbooks to round out our evening.
All right, Chair Zebarth, members of the board, Superintendent Olson, we have five policies on the agenda for this evening. The first is policy six thirteen. This is graduation requirements. We brought this to a first read a couple of meetings back now. It is still on hold. We are still planning to have resolution, we need functionally resolution on that one prior to the start of the school year. Unfortunately, we just don't have the resolution yet, and so we'll be bringing that one back for a second read as soon as possible, but at a time to be determined. The action items for tonight, we do have four policies up for second read, and I'll go through them one by one, and then I believe the board is going to approve or deny those en masse, right? All right, so starting with six oh six, this is textbooks and instructional materials. The purpose of this policy is to provide direction for selection of textbooks and instructional materials. And this is a fairly succinct policy, and we get into more detail in policy six oh, six point five, but any questions on six oh six at all? Right ahead. Six oh six point five, this is the procedure for selection, use, and reconsideration of textbooks, instructional material, media, and supplementary material. The district has done substantial work on this policy in the past, and as Chair Zebarth, you noted at a previous meeting, this policy was used partly as a model for MSBA's own model policy on this. The purpose of this policy is to provide direction and to delegate responsibility for selection and reconsideration of academic materials. Referencing MSBA, one distinction between ours, six oh six point five, and theirs is ours is encompassing all educational or instructional materials, not just library materials. And, and just to that point, there are several documents towards the back of the six oh six point five that are essentially template forms for folks to fill out, requesting, for instance, reconsideration materials, a reconsideration packet checklist, teacher rationale for use of challenged instructional materials, and reconsideration committee reports. Any questions on six oh six point five?
So this would also include like classroom libraries as well?
Correct, yep. Yep, all materials using instructional process.
It's been just, to just tag off that a little bit, Mark, the policy committee has talked about this at length as well, and when you talk about additional supplementary materials like that, teachers are not making those decisions independent of their district or building supervisory structure. So if they want to have additional films or videos shown in the classroom, that's something that they need to run through their building management principles to make sure that everybody's on board with that, if I understood that correctly.
Yeah, I think the, moving forward for this year, I know I've talked with Principal Sherber and Director of Curriculum Instruction, Teaching and Learning, City Fashing, but some communication on this policy, it's, it's not one that needs to, that can just be talked away right now. I mean, this one has to be front and center for all principals, and communicated effort is going to have to be made since, upon its adoption, because this one is important, as as the chair member, Branson, has just shared, like, just to think that this one's going to be read and applied with, it's, it's very new, it's very, it's very different, because it's very encompassing, it's, it covers a lot more material than we've ever done before, so.
Any additional discussion on six oh six point five?
No, I just want to note to Mark that also added in there for process for selection says it must be from evidence or research-based materials as well, which is something new.
Yeah, quite a lot of discussion about that. Did that answer your questions, Mark?
Any further questions on six oh six five?
I don't think so, not hearing any.
Hearing none. We'll move on to six twenty. This is credit for learning. The purpose of this policy, this policy, excuse me, recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment option and other advanced enrichment programs. This policy also recognizes student achievement that occurs in other schools, in alternative learning sites, and in out-of-school experiences such as community organizations, work-based learning, and other educational activities and opportunities. This policy addresses transfer of student credit from out-of-state, private, or home schools and online learning programs to address how school district will recognize student achievement obtained outside of the school district. And that was the particular items of note in the amended, the proposed amendments to policy six twenty were specifically around how the district would onboard credit earned in other districts, such as to provide opportunity for students who were newly enrolled to Monticello to, in a fair order of time, to have their academic performance recognized in their new district, i.e. the Monticello district.
And I believe that included students that were in an online situation as well. Am I correct about that? Any questions for Mr. Daniker on six twenty? Hearing none?
All right, and finally, this is policy, proposed policy nine oh four. This is a policy which currently does not exist in Monticello schools, but does exist in MSBA, and so it's titled Distribution of Materials on Stool District Property by Non-School Persons. The purpose of this policy is to provide for distribution of materials appropriate to the school setting by non-staff and non-students on school district property in a reasonable time, place, and manner, which does not disrupt the educational program nor interfere with the educational objectives of the school district. And so in, in concise terms, you know, schools are what's called in legal terms captive audiences, and we just want to be very careful about the materials and the opportunities that folks have to distribute such materials that are not necessarily approved by the school district itself, or the school district is not, you know, necessarily supporting of those materials, and so this is a policy to guide that practice.
Questions or discussion from the board on policy nine oh four? Okay, hearing none. We have before us policy six oh six, six oh six point five, six twenty, and nine oh four for approval. Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor of approving the four policies as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any opposed, please say no. And the four policies are approved as presented. Thank you.
And finally, we have two handbooks for approval this evening. These are not policies, so they don't go through the first read, second read process. These are up for proposal, or excuse me, for action tonight. The first is the elementary handbook. And just really appreciate that the elementary principals put together a coordinated handbook across each of the three elementary, so we don't have standalone handbooks for each of those. And then we also have the middle school handbook up for approval tonight. At our meeting in July, we'll be contemplating the, we'll be contemplating the high school handbook, and then likely at the August policy meeting. And then at the August board meeting, we'll be looking at the employee, revised employee handbook for the year as well.
And that will be, meet a very big goal that we had, to get all the employee and student handbooks approved before the beginning of the school year, so.
So typically, the handbooks are provided accessible on the school's websites. But the principal, I don't know that you directly send them as well. No? Linked in a newsletter as well, yep.
And I want to just add, for anybody that might be wondering, the policy committee went through the, the handbooks as well with a fine-tooth comb, line by line. So that's where the handbooks, the committee that passed through. So that is something that we're required to have in place by, according to the new legislative decision that was made at the end of the last session by May of 20?
Spring of '25. We'll have to have.
Spring of '25.
A policy on that. And so the, the substance of that policy is not declared by the legislature. We can choose whatever we want. But we will have to have a board adopt a policy within the next year.
We're also anticipating that, because that's statewide, that MSBA will probably develop some type of model policy to guide all of the various school districts and their choices. It's not meant, if I understand the legislature correctly, it's not meant to be a one-size-fits-all in every district. But they simply wanted it in a policy so that people had a place to go, so it wasn't arbitrary or random or subjectively applied.
Well, in, in this one, yeah, in all of them. So there is a cellphone section in here, and then there's an additional cellphone one in the high school one as well.
I don't think we have one in the elementary handbook. I don't think we cover cellphones. We do?
Yeah, it was, because we'd want to make them consistent. So we had it in, in these two.
Each school does talk about cellphones, Mark, if that's your question.
No, my question, what in this handbook for two cellphone policy, if any changes?
More on having that phone in the locker, more so than most schools. And so I know the state, that some of those agencies had asked for policies so they could take a look at some of the ones that were out there that were working. And so he had submitted some more information to the principals association, so they have that information.
Did that answer your question?
So just to a little bit generalize the question from Board Member Branson. So some of the changes that are reflected in the two handbooks for tonight, one thing that came out of the policy committee discussion was to review the language around lunches, school lunches, and unpaid meals. And so we did amend that language so it was consistent across these two handbooks, as well as the high school. We had, you know, some information regarding MCA testing and opt-out of testing. That was included in a handbook that was not required by laws. We've removed that from that handbook. We are required to post that information on our district webpage, and so it's, it's done satisfactorily there. And then there was just some annual ongoing amendments that principals typically make in their handbooks as well.
Yeah, to tag off of that, we, we made a specific effort in each section of the handbook that if there was a concurrent district policy that they were hyperlinked back and forth, and that the language was consistent between policy and handbook.
And also, in addition to that, too, the principals, the model MSBA handbook was shared with the principals for contemplation and review as they reviewed and amended their handbook with their staffs as well, and brought that forward to the policy committee.
I heard we expect that to come out pretty soon.
Yep.
We're just about done. They're just tweaking a few last areas, as I recall from our last meeting.
Sure.
Knowing there's going to be a change in guidance, we didn't make much change. Is, has the students lock them up in the locker? Or is the student can carry them?
Can you, you okay with that? Personally, I have a very curiousness. So I could be more bold and quick.
Damage with 400 cellphones versus what we can guide. I think whether structural timing to be put away turned off. I can't remember specifically which. Are put away in the lockers? Manage that.
With a couple of examples of how it works well, some strategies that they'll use to really null the distraction. Provide examples of how to do it when we have not updated system.
And just to that point, too, and hearing from the principals, I think the legislature this year, I think, recognized the fact that there is no one singular answer on this topic. And that's why they left broad discretion to school districts across the state as they contemplate this over the next year, about what direction to go. I would anticipate there would be a significant conversation within our district as well, in terms of getting to that point. But I know that there are classrooms, as, as the high school principals know, there are classrooms that have been successful with students with cellphones in hands. There are other classrooms that need some support in terms of what that looks like from a school or district level. And so I think it would be a much easier conversation if there was all the data pointed in one direction, and there was, you know, scientific community, you know, whatever the case might be, in alignment on one approach. There's just not. And so I think that'll be an interesting piece for me to kind of watch us have that dialogue as a district, and ultimately arrive at whatever our proposed policy is on that.
I think we also have to remember, it's not just a physical phone. There are wearable technology. There's Apple Watches. There's different forms of glasses that are out there. And so some of the technology is evolving faster than we can keep up with. So trying to write a policy that's going to incorporate all of that will be challenging for every district, I think. It's a, it's a nationwide discussion that's happening right now. It's not just our state or our district about how to manage cellphones in, in the K-12 or pre-K through 12 environment.
It's not only our students as well. Cellphones are addressed in our employee handbook also.
Exactly, so.
And also, what is in the handbook is not necessarily what you see day to day in the lives of our buildings. And so it is very nuanced.
I think it's, a lot of business environments, you know, work environments struggle with the same thing, so. Stay tuned. It's, it sounds like we're, we're poised for some changes and to have more firm policies than maybe we've had in the past as we move into this next school year. Any other questions about elementary and middle school handbooks? Okay, we have before us the elementary and the middle school handbooks for approval this evening, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Casey Root, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of approving the elementary and middle school handbooks as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And motion passes six zero. And finding that our agenda is complete, we are looking forward to our next school. School board meeting will be July 15th. July is the only month of the year, just to remind those in attendance, that we only have one meeting. And so that will be July the 15th. And are there any other announcements prior to adjourning?
Budget meeting in the.
Budget meeting to follow this evening. And if that's everything, then we are adjourned at 8:19. Thank you.